Okay.
I'm going to call the special meeting of the Board of Aldermen to order on June 7th, 2021, at 7:00 PM via teleconference. The prayer will be offered by Deputy City Clerk Allison Waite and Alderwoman Clay will lead us in the Pledge to the Flag.
Almighty God, we have the high honor and the serious duty to manage the affairs of our beloved city. Fill us, O God, with a spirit of unity and understanding, which enables us to face our multiple problems with a serene mind, with justice and charity for all, so that any and all decisions made by us will always be for the betterment and greater happiness of all our fellow citizens. So help us, God. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. As President of the Board of Aldermen, I find that due to the state of emergency declared by the Governor as a result of the COVID-19 pandemic, and in accordance with the Governor's Emergency Order Number 12 pursuant to Executive Order 2020-4, this public body is authorized to meet electronically. Please note that there is no physical location to observe and listen contemporaneously to this meeting, which was authorized pursuant to the Governor's Emergency Order. However, in accordance with the Emergency Order, I am confirming that we are providing public access to the meeting by telephone, with additional access possibilities by video or other electronic means. To access Zoom, please refer to the agenda or the city's website for the meeting link. To join by phone, dial 1-929-205-6099. The meeting ID is 853-6483-0438. The passcode is 715-114. The public may also view the meeting via Channel 16. We previously gave notice to the public of the necessary information for accessing the meeting through public postings. Instructions have also been provided on the City of Nashville's website and publicly noticed in the Nashville Telegraph, City Hall, and the Nashville Public Library. If anyone has a problem accessing the meeting via phone or Channel 16, please call 603-589-3329 and they will help you connect. In the event the public is unable to access the meeting via the methods mentioned above, the meeting will be adjourned and rescheduled. Please note that all votes that are taken during the meeting will be done by roll call vote. Let's start the meeting by taking a roll call attendance. When each member states their presence, please also state whether there is anyone in the room with you during this meeting, which is required under the right to no law. Deputy City Clerk Waite, would you please call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien.
I am present, and I'm currently in the automatic chamber.
Alderman, please.
I am here. I am in the automatic chamber.
Alderwoman Kelly.
Alderman Dowd.
Yes, I am here in the chamber.
Alderman Karen.
I am here, and I am also in the chamber.
Alderman Clemmons.
I am here. I am participating alone. I am meeting alone, and I can hear everyone, and I can hear everybody in the proceedings.
Alderman Lopez. Alderman Tenza.
I am present. I am participating from home, and no one else is in the room with me, and I can hear everyone.
Alderwoman Lou.
I'm here alone, and I can hear the proceedings.
Alderman Jettie.
I am here alone, and I can hear the proceedings.
Alderman Schmidt.
I am present, alone, and can hear everyone.
Alderman Laws.
I am here alone, and I can hear everyone.
Alderman Cleaver.
I'm present remotely, and I can hear everyone. I am alone.
Alderman Harriet Gaffray.
I am present. I'm in this room alone, and I can hear everyone.
Alderman Wills here.
I'm here in the chamber, and I can hear everyone.
All right, you have 13 attendants.
Thank you so much. As usual and customary, tonight is a public hearing of the Personnel Administrative Affairs Committee, so I will return the meeting over to Alderman Karen.
Thank you, Madam President. I would like to check to see if Mayor Donches is here.
Yes, Madam Chair, I am here.
Okay, thank you. So we're here to have a public hearing on R-21-143, proposing an amendment to the city charter relative to the manner of appointments to the Nashville Board of Police Commissioners. So before we get started with testimony, Mayor, would you like to say a few words since you are the sponsor of this proposal?
Well, Trish, Alderwoman Trish Clay is going to talk to the resolution.
Oh, okay. Then Alderwoman Trish.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm just going to say a few things to try to help those understand what this will do, what the proposed change does if the Commissioners fall under the city. So the actual changes would mean that we would go from three Commissioners to five Commissioners. We would go from one person nominating the Commissioners, the New Hampshire Governor, to two different elected officials nominating the Commissioner, the Nashville Mayor and the President of the Board of Aldermen. We would go from one committee of five individuals, the Governor's Executive Council, none at this time from Nashville, approving the nomination to two committees, sorry, approving the nomination, to two committees. The first would be made up of five members of the Board of Aldermen members, which would be the Personnel Administrative Affairs Committee, and the second by the full Board of Aldermen, 15 members, all from Nashville. It should be noted that each of the Nashville committees, the public will be given the opportunity to have their voices heard, and the vetting and interview process will be full transparency. Throughout Nashville's history, I should say, New Hampshire's history, I'm sorry, there have been 20 municipalities that have lost control of the Commissioners or Police Department, and all but one, Nashville, has taken back control. I know that some are going to ask, why introduce it now? And I think, bottom line is, it's time. It's time for the Nashville residents to have a voice in their police department. We pay the bills, the salaries, and we have the legal liability if something goes wrong, but we don't have a voice. I believe this change will bring full transparency and accountability. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Okay, thank you. Anything to add, Mayor?
No, Madam Chair.
Okay, thank you. Chief Carrigan, I understand you have a small presentation to make to the company. Thank you.
I do thank you, Miss. Good evening, everyone, and thank you. My name is Michael Carrigan, Chief of the National Police Department. I'd like to speak in opposition to this legislation to have the National Police Commission appointed by the Mayor.
We can't hear him.
Okay. Please hold, Chief.
Check, one, two, three, four, five.
Can you hear?
Can you hear that? Check, one, two, three, four, five.
That works.
Chief, you may start again.
Thank you. Can you hear me now?
Can you hear the chief?
Yes.
Okay, yes.
Good evening, everyone, and thank you. My name is Michael Carrigan, the Chief of the National Police Department. I'd like to speak in opposition to this legislation to have the National Police Commission appointed by the Mayor and Board of Aldermen as opposed to the current process of appointment from the Governor. I'd like to be very clear on this point. I'm here today to oppose this on a positional level. I've enjoyed a close and positive working relationship with most of you on the Board and the Mayor's office. My concerns are based on the position and not the names of the current people in office. I'm opposed to this legislation because it brings local political control into the daily management of the Police Department. With that local political control comes local political influence. That can be a dangerous thing. I'd like to briefly explain some of my rationale. Under the current system, three Commissioners are nominated by the Governor and approved by the Executive Council, which has Nashville representation. Each of the three current Commissioners has been appointed by a Democratic Governor Maggie Hassan and have been reappointed by Republican Governor Chris Sununu. Each has been confirmed by Democratic Executive Council Deb Pignatelli and reappointed by Republican Dave Wheeler. These Commissioners must be Nashville residents and have been so for the last five years. We currently have two lifelong Nashville residents and a third who has lived here with his family for over 32 years. They are taxpaying Nashville residents who have a vested interest in the management of the Police Department. They review and are briefed on all officers we hire, promote, and on some occasions, fire. They meet with us monthly to review every aspect of our budget to make sure we are spending within our means. They make recommendations and ensure our programs and expenditures are valid and well-thought-out. There have been many occasions when the Commission has requested about, has questions about our operations and asked us to look for alternative solutions to the problems. They have been very clear on contract negotiations and always keep the city budget issue in mind when reviewing our requests. They are local vested citizens of Nashville. We do have local control. With local political control, that brings political influence over the daily operations of the Police Department. When a Police Commissioner is selected by the Mayor and Aldermen, they are more likely to have a political loyalty to that politician, especially when it comes to reappointment. With that loyalty comes influence. That influence can affect who we hire, who we promote, and who we transfer. The Governor has a much lower stake in the day-to-day operations of the Nashville City Government and therefore is much less able to exert control and influence over police business. The National Police Department has always prided ourselves on never compromising our hiring standards. It is one of the cornerstones of what makes us a great agency. You all reap the benefits of that through the quality of the police officers that work in Nashville. It could mean that those less qualified may get hired or promoted based on the personal wishes of a local politician. Decisions may not be based on qualifications and the level of professionalism from our agency would suffer. A majority of police officers that come to work in Nashville are from cities and towns where there is local political influence and control. They come here for the very reason of avoiding the negative element. They know that when it comes to Nashville, they will be hired and progress through the ranks based solely on performance and not who you know. That could change under the current proposal. It greatly increases the likelihood that this influence would significantly lower the quality of officers hired and promoted. The dangers don't always come, don't only come from who gets hired or promoted. Local political loyalty can also bring influence over criminal investigations and how they are handled. As you will hear later tonight, there are times when allegations are made involving local official entities, and there needs to be an ability to effectively and appropriately conduct those investigations without fear of influence over those political offices. You'll hear from retired Nashville Police Chief Tim Heffron, who advised that he was only able to conduct an investigation in the early 90s because he didn't fear reprisal from the local sitting officials. The current system allows for better transparency, which as of late has been something expected more and more by our citizens. Under our current system, if an allegation is made, an investigation is completed, and the outcome can be presented with the public knowing that there has not been any influence from political offices. No matter what the outcome, the local government can now say they had no influence. That will not be the case if we make these proposed changes. Finally, on this point, I can say that I, as well as my past few predecessors, have never received a call from the Governor or an Executive Council member expressing any attempts to influence the daily operations of the National Police Department. It has been presented that we are the only city without local appointments. First of all, as I spoke earlier, all of our Commissioners are local Nashville taxpaying citizens. Secondly, I agree wholeheartedly that we are the only political, the only police department left with no system. That's a good thing. The National Police Department is considered the leader of police agencies in this state. We have a reputation for professionalism and progressive thinking throughout the state and New England. We have been nationally accredited since 1991. Our very first accreditation report recognized us for having a non-locally-appointed commission to keep political influence out of the management of the department. A CALIA certification is not easy to obtain or maintain, as you've heard and learned. We have held the highest level of certification for years. We are an agency that is committed to and strives to follow best practices in the field of law enforcement. You have seen over the past year that we do not have problems that other communities or police agencies have. I have worked with numerous community groups alongside many of you Aldermen and Alderwomen, as well as the Mayor. Many of you have continually told me that we are by far the best agency in the state. Many of you have campaigned on the safety and confidence your police department provides. You promote Nashville as being the safest and best place to live in the state, as well as the country. You have all expressed the confidence that we are leaders among policing in this state. I have asked many of you, what, if anything, would you like to see changed? What concerns do you have about how the agency is being run? The answer from all of you has been that our agency is the best. I agree that we are the best, so why would you change it to something less? Why would you want to bring into question local political influence? That makes no sense to me or anyone else. We've been compared to Manchester and Portsmouth as agencies that have changed to local control. I'm curious as to what is great about that. Portsmouth has elected Police Commissioners. I think we can all agree that elected Commissioners would bring even more potential for political favoritism and loyalties. Manchester has a commission that is advisory-only. They have no decision-making powers, instead giving all the power to the Mayor. Is the goal for us to strive to be more like Manchester? People choose to move to Nashville versus these other towns and cities for a reason. Regarding the fiscal responsibility of the current system, it has been presented that one of the reasons behind this move is because the Police Department, with Commission approval, has come in each year with a budget that is above the cost of living, which leads to a much higher tax rate. That statement doesn't cover the whole story. When contracts are negotiated, they usually cover a multi-year period, usually three years. The contracts are negotiated with the city's Corporate Council present every step of the way. They are reviewed and approved by the Commission, who has input throughout the process. The contracts then go through the same system as every other contract in the city. They must be approved by you, the Aldermen and Alderwomen. Some have passed, and some have failed. It's part of the process. Each year, the Department has given recommended increases to the budget from the previous year. If, for example, the Police Department is asked to come in at a 0% increase, the reality is that it is a cut in services after contractual obligations are met, even though those were previously agreed to. It is a responsible thing to do for me to inform the city government what that change would look like. This year, for example, a 0% increase would only be achieved with the layoff of approximately 10 of our newest officers. Those 10 officers, by the way, are some of the most diverse officers this department has ever hired. I believe each of you would be disappointed if I chose to lay off each of those employees and never informed any of you of what that consequence was. Instead, we've continued to meet and develop a strategy, which will be proposed next week, that will bring us not only within the current request, but will assist in funding next year's budget. Regardless of what happens, we have always stated that we will come in on budget, no matter what that number is, but we owe it to everyone to show exactly what that would look like. It's also important to note that each month, we meet with the Commission in a public meeting. There are usually one to two Aldermen and Alderwomen present at each of these meetings, where they are able to ask questions and listen to the operations of the department. The minutes for each meeting are posted online after being approved. The National Police Department also posts our yearly goals and objectives and our five-year plan. We are very transparent and willing to answer any questions or concerns our citizens may have. In closing, I want you to know that I believe this proposal is not good for the City of Nashville or the National Police Department. It brings in local political influence to an accredited agency that is able to be accountable yet independent to local political influence. Statements made about this change making us a better police department are just not true. No one has been able to explain how this would make us better, other than giving more power and control to local influence. It would undermine our ability to effectively run this organization, as well as we have for the past 30 years. If you respect your police department, which has been, which has been an instrumental institution in having Nashville voted one of the best cities to live, then please do not consider voting for this change. Thank you very much to everyone for your time tonight. As always, please feel free to call me or email me with any questions or concerns. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Chairman Tolner, would you like to add to the Chief's comments?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for the opportunity to speak, and I will, I will be brief. The Nashville Police Commission works diligently to ensure that the Nashville PD is a well-run and respected department, making Nashville a safe place to live and raise a family. I've been on both sides of this issue, as a Police Commissioner and as an Alderman, and my opinion has never wavered. An independent commission is best for Nashville. Regarding the secret process, not the case. There is always an opportunity to speak with any sitting Governor. Former administrations, past Mayors, have absolutely had conversations proposing candidates before a Governor. Choosing to ignore an opportunity is not the same as being excluded from the process. Saying Nashville is the only remaining city with Governor-appointed local Commissioners is true. I suggest that be viewed as a positive, as there are other New Hampshire police departments struggling to manage the very change you are now contemplating. Accountability. Every meeting, as the Chief said, is open to the public, and for the last five months, we have held in-person meetings. Senior-level staff at the Police Department participate on numerous local nonprofit boards, which lends itself to successful community policing. Each Commissioner is local, resides in Nashville, and is responsible and responsive to the citizens in the exact same way as each member of the Board of Aldermen. As the Board of Aldermen are aware, the survey was incorrect with respect to the Police Department budget. The Board of Commissioners proposes a budget in the exact same way that Nashville fired and the Board of Education does. The Mayor and the Board of Aldermen approve the final police budget. The Commissioners do not. As I've always said, any business or municipality at times will have issues or bumps in the road that need to be addressed. It is how you handle those situations that will prove the value and integrity of each institution. Over the course of time, the Commission has dealt with a few of those situations and has done so with the utmost consideration of its citizens, staff, and city. I was just saying to some folks the other day, imagine if you were at a Mayor's convention, and one Mayor says, "My Police Department has one of the highest CALIA scores nationally, and last year has recruited the most diverse police class in the city's history, and despite the national climate, is at full complement. And actually, it's the only PD in the state with such a distinction. And they have an outstanding relationship with the nonprofits and social service agencies." Don't take my word for it. Ask them. And then, this Mayor says, "As I always tell my community, we enjoy living, working, and playing in one of the safest cities in America." People, that Mayor is Jim Donches, and that city is Nashville. Why would you change it? You have local control, but some of you are proposing is total control. The only question we should be asking is how this legislation is deemed necessary and worthy of a charter change. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you, Chairman Tolner. Before we get started, I'd like to acknowledge that Corporation Counsel Steve Bolton is here. Do we have any Board members that have any questions to the prior speakers before we get started to the testimonies? Okay, seeing none?
Madam Chair, I just wanted to let you guys know that I had showed up. I was a little late, sorry.
Thank you. Alderman Lopez has shown up at 7:24. Thank you. Okay, then we will start with testimony in favor, and please remember that you must give your name and address, and you have three minutes to speak, so try to keep all your information as concise as you can. So we will start.
And we'll warn them at 30 seconds.
Yes, we'll warn you at 30 seconds, I've been told. Thank you. Okay. Do we have some hands up?
Yeah. Right now, Greg Murphy. Representative Newman.
Okay, who do we want? Okay, Greg Murphy. Okay, we'll acknowledge Greg Murphy.
Good evening. I'm Greg Murphy from 231 Salmon Street in Manchester, New Hampshire. By way of introduction, I want to let the folks know that I appreciate the opportunity. I am currently the accreditation manager for the Manchester, New Hampshire Police Department that the Chief just mentioned. We are also a nationally accredited agency and have been since 1990. I'm not going to reiterate everything that I've heard. I totally agree I oppose this move based on a couple of things. When I was a police officer for 2,000, excuse me, for 2,000 years, since, for 22 years, we started with a Police Commission that had similar authority to what you're looking for. And fortunately, we went to an advisory-only commission. That keeps this, certain select citizens and residents involved. They do not have any influence at all, though. They're advisory, excuse me. That's a plus, and being an accredited agency like Nashville is, like we are, any undue influence from any political body could be devastating, not only to a predation, but to personnel issues, recruiting, selection. It's just not necessary. CALIA offers great guidance and best practices, and I don't know if the Chief told you, but 5% of law enforcement agencies in this country are accredited. It's great to be accredited. It's a goal. It's not easy. And Nashville, when I think of Nashville, I've dealt with them for 15 years. We've done mock assessments. They are a great police department, highest integrity around. I don't want to say we're second to them, but we're running close, and it's a tie. So I won't take up the rest of the night, but I fully support the Nashville PD, the Chiefs, the police officers, their accreditation manager. They are top-notch. You should be proud of them, as I am, to call them my friends and an agency that works with us. They come to Manchester, we go to Nashville for SWAT and, you know, high-risk incidents. So you, if you vote this in, I think you're making an absolute mistake. Leave it the way it is. If it's not broken, don't fix it. When I think of Nashville, it's pride, integrity, they're squared away, and I do believe it would tarnish the image of the PD down the road if you allowed this to happen. So again, I thank you for my, for your time and the opportunity to speak on behalf of my friends and colleagues at the Nashville PD.
30 seconds.
Thank you. Okay, there are a lot of hands up, so we're just going to go across our screen. The next is Representative Ray Newman.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Amendment R-2143 allows Nashville to regain home rule.
We need to have your name and address. We need your name and address, please.
I'm Representative, thank you. Representative Ray Newman. I'm Representative in Ward 2, and I live at 25 Charlotte Avenue.
Thank you.
Amendment R-21143 allows Nashville to regain home rule. We do not have home or local rule, only for the process of appointing the Police Commissioners. And all it does is place this on the ballot for voter approval. Since 1891, we've had three, a three-person commission appointed by the Governor. Back then, it might have been appropriate for the Governor and the Executive Council to have control of that process, but that's certainly not the case today. The Police Commission is fixing, appointing police officers and fixing salaries. They have full power to make all the rules for government and the police force. The Police Commission is also have full and complete care and control of all the lands and buildings used by the Police Department. Given these powers, it's very important for local city officials who are more informed than state officials about what the Police Department needs and who have responsibility for the wellbeings of Nashville and that they also have home rule for the appointment of Police Commissioners. All other cities have already regained home rule, and I think that is a good thing for the appointment of Police Commissioners. And again, all this amendment does is put it on the ballot for voter approval. This amendment is fully compliant with the New Hampshire Constitution and state law. An example of how bad state rule can be is to consider a bill that passed just last Thursday in the House of Representatives. So when there is state rule, this bill was passed even though it specifically ignored both the Constitution and state law. It removes Nashville's home rule from all It removes Nashua's home rule from all spending by reinstating a spending cap that had been ruled unenforceable in the State Supreme Court. All 27 Nashua state representatives supported the defeat of this bill. Returning the home rule for appointments to the police commission will allow for more transparency, accountability, and increased diversity in the selection of police commissioners. Not necessary, and it will also help.
30 seconds.
Because those people. Some say if the appointment process isn't broke, don't fix it. I see the appointment process is broken. Let recapture home rule for the whole rule, home rule for the appointment of the police commissioner and make a response to the Nashua. For these reasons, I ask you to let the voters vote by supporting this amendment. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Okay, next we have Renee Lias Claffey, please.
Yes, hi. Renee Lias Claffey, 32 Deer Haven Drive in Nashua. I support this measure, and I want to say first of all that supporting this does not mean that you're necessarily critical of the current police force. I strongly support the current police force. This is really more about state versus local control. I support this measure because it would broaden the number of commissioners from three to five, and that would give us a better opportunity to have the commissioners fully reflect the diversity of the city of Nashua. In the history of the state-appointed commission, we've only had one woman serve as the commissioner, and I believe no people of color, and that does a disservice to our city. I also support it because police are a big part of the city's budget, and I find it hard to understand why their funding requests would come in the way they do with the police commission the way it is now. To me, it seems like it should be more like schools. I'd also point out that the current commissioners would serve out their full terms. This wouldn't result in any rapid change, and there are lots of checks and balances for the appointees among the mayor and the aldermen. So finally, even if you don't feel really comfortable with the measure itself, I'd urge you to at least think about putting it on the ballot to let the voters decide. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next we have Amber Loge Morgan, please.
Hi, Amber Loge Morgan, resident of 20 Lock Street, and I do want to speak in support of this measure. My statement is about the appointments of this position, not any individuals specifically. Before I do make my statement, I want to thank our police department for their work each and every day, and specifically over the last year and how they conducted themselves during a very tumultuous year. With a heightened environment around police nationwide, what better way to back our blue than to bring this decision of police commissioners local? Currently, there are elected officials making these decisions that may not be reflective of our city's election. There are nuances in history that exist in any city that someone who does not live here would not be able to understand or frankly have the time to care about it as much as our residents and our locally-elected officials will. We need a police commission that is reflective of our city. There have only been a handful of women ever that have been appointed, and currently there are no women and no Black, Indigenous, or people of color. As pointed out, in the state of New Hampshire, there is only one town or city that has police commissioners that are appointed by the governor, and that's Nashua. So it begs a reflection as to why we do. Are we afraid of change? So thank you to those that have brought this up and forward to the citizens of Nashua who, like me, may be surprised that this is even a thing. So I ask that personal views aside, that we allow our citizens, who have elected each of you, to decide and vote and put this on the ballot. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Just a reminder, these are for testimony in favor of the legislation. Next, we have Representative Sherri Dunnett.
That's the 18th Ward terrorist, and I would like to speak in support of the referendum. I will underscore what the previous speakers have said, and briefly, this is not a referendum regarding the police. I think we do have a strong police department, and we all appreciate it. I do think it's a good idea to think about expanding the commission from three to five. I'm a little uncomfortable with three, and especially since I think, you know, a number of the police commissioners basically go around in the same circles. It's just a little bit too comfortable, I believe, and opening it up to more diversity, I think, would be a great idea. So I would hope that we would consider putting it on the agenda for the charter change because I think the citizens of Nashua should be the ones that are deciding.
Thank you. Okay, and next we have Kathy Abel, please. Kathy, you're on mute.
Hi, my name is Kathy Abel. I live at 41 Manchester Street in Nashua. I've been a resident of Nashua for 35 years. I'm speaking in support of amending the city charter to have Nashua police commissioners chosen by the mayor and the Board of Aldermen instead of the current system of the governor appointing them. Nashua is the only remaining city in the state to have its police commissions appointed by the governor. It seems an outdated system to me because the current police commission does not reflect the diversity of Nashua. Nashua is the most diverse city in the state of New Hampshire. 73% white, 13% Hispanic, 8% Asian, and 4% Black or African-American. There are more women than men in Nashua, 97 men for every 100 women. But all three Nashua police commissioners are middle-aged white men, which does not reflect the makeup of the community. Another concern for me is taxes. Police commissioners have significant power over the Nashua city budget indirectly by their ability to appoint police officers and set their salaries. When people complain about Nashua taxes, they need to ask if part of the problem may be the police commission consistently asking for budgets that increase spending at a rate above the cost of living, more than other city departments. The mission statement of the Nashua Police Department says that it strives to improve the quality of life in the community and to protect people and property in partnership with the citizens of Nashua. What better way to act in partnership than to have the elected local officials, people who Nashuans have elected, serve as, or chosen, serve as police commissioners instead of people appointed by the governor? I like knowing who my local officials are, and this is why I support amending the city charter. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Mike Ballantyne, and you're mute. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair. Hello, everyone. I'm Mike Ballantyne. I live at 9 Bartlett Avenue. I support this resolution. I think local control is almost always preferable for local issues, and the police are as local issues as you can get. If I imagine a person having trouble with the police, I would expect them to be able to resolve that with the department, or the chief, or the commissioners, or then our local officials. But that's not the way it works. The chain of control, chain of accountability, goes from the commissioners up to Concord. In my experience, the local level, alderman and mayor have, are visible, accessible, transparent, much more than a council and governor. That makes sense because they're a little closer to the community. So local is better than state, in my mind. I also like increasing the number of counselors, commissioners to five, along with local control and more people involved in the appointment process. I think that will make it easier for the commission to better reflect our city's population. So I think this should pass and be sent to the citizens for a vote. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Bernadette Halloran.
Hi, everyone. I live at 2 o'clock Tower Place in Nashua. I am in favor of, well, first I want to say that, thank you Chief Carrigan and his predecessor, Chief La Boy. My interactions with the police department has all been very positive. I think they do a good job, and I feel very safe in Nashua.
Could you hold on, Ms. Bernadette? Okay, we're trying to find out where the background noise is coming from. Thank you. You may start again.
Okay. You may start again.
Bernadette?
Yes.
Okay.
Let me gather my thoughts, please.
Oh, okay. We thought we lost you.
No. I am in favor of more oversight. When a department has a $30 million annual budget, I am comfortable with more eyes on the budgeting process. So that change from three to five makes me more comfortable. I just feel it's time, since Nashua is the only city for a long period of time, to have this specific process that it has now, time to take a look at it, review it, and I think it's very important in today's world for local residents to have the opportunity to have their voice heard via vote. So I would urge the aldermen to approve having this proposal as a referendum on the ballot. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, is there, I'm going to ask again, is there anyone out there who wants to give testimony in favor of the legislation?
Yes, please, Sonia Prince.
Okay, I didn't see your hand up. Thank you, Sonia Prince. Name and address, please.
Sonia Prince, 49 Tufts Drive. I am in favor of this. No one brags about the police department more than I do, and especially our chief. I love him. I think he's great, especially with their great training and steps taken before use of force or before they use weapons. But it's time that we step into the 21st century with transparency and oversight. Vetting our officers and training our officers won't change. Only sets of eyes watching and added transparency will be added. An example of not being accountable, in my opinion, and speaking of loyalty and influence, is when a current commissioner who has been appointed is married to a sitting alderman who votes on their $30 million budgets. That is a huge political conflict of interest, in my opinion. Another appointee is the police athletic director. So transparency and oversight is important and needs to be unbiased. The people who are against putting this question on the ballot may counter with, oh, but they don't understand what a policeman goes through, as we do on other boards. We have professionals come in and make their case and explain it, and then we vote. So the commissions do just that. Every single city and town in New Hampshire has been taking back local control. So why would the department be afraid of a Board of Aldermen nominating two people and the mayor nominating three people than having 15 elected members of the Board of Aldermen interview them, get input from the public, then vote on those five nominees? With the current system, do you really think a New Hampshire governor spends a lot of time thinking of who would serve the Nashua Police Commission best, especially with all the issues going on? Let the people have input on where their tax dollars go. Lastly, as a woman, I'm appalled to discover that in 126 years, only one woman was on the commission in the 1970s, and she wasn't just any woman, she was a judge. So why is that? When women are 50% of the Nashua population at minimal, some of us are tired of seeing boards of white men, which has obviously been done by design, in my opinion. At the very least, they should have appointed a woman to show respect to the women on the force. Anyone with a daughter, mother, or sister should be alarmed. It's time. Please put this question on the ballot so we can join the rest of New Hampshire cities and towns in the 21st century and let the people decide if they want an accurate representation of our population on all boards around the city. I'll finish with a quote from Dan Rather. "In my book, it's pretty simple. If you work hard to prevent people from voting on this question, you pretty much admit your ideas aren't popular and you feel the verdict of the people." So please approve this. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I see another hand up. David Victory.
Hi there. David Victory, 53, Arlington Street, Nashua. I want to echo a lot of what many other speakers have said. I have very positive feelings about our Nashua Police Department, but I think it's time to take back local control. I think that's a good thing. Nashua is the only city in the state that has a commission appointed by the governor, and I'm not okay with that. So this should go to the ballot. Thank you.
Thank you. We have Sarah Peratori.
Hi, thank you. My name is Sarah Peratori. I live at 7 Dartmouth Street in Nashua. I agree with all the reasons that the folks who spoke before me have raised the issues they've raised about the existing system, but I would also like to take the opportunity to point out two things. The chief spoke of transparency, and it does, the existing system doesn't give the voters the opportunity to have the conversation with the governors and the executive, governor and executive counselors to discuss suitability of candidates for the commission. That's only for those individuals. So it's not transparent citizen just to the governor and the executive council. And the other point I would like to make is that I think this is an opportunity. I think we should look at this as an opportunity. The police commission, if it's representative of a cross-section of the citizens of Nashua, that gives us an opportunity for the police department to build stronger relationships with members of those communities, communities across the citizenry of Nashua. If it's only one cross, one section of the public, those, all those other communities that aren't represented don't have the opportunity to strengthen those relationships that exist or build strong ones where they don't. And I think that's a missed opportunity, especially in these times. So I support this. Thank you.
Thank you. And it looks like we have Michael Peterson.
Yes, Michael Peterson, Nashua resident, 11 Delaware Road. I also serve as a state representative for Nashua Ward Five. And two points I'd like to bring up is, I think the city of Nashua and its residents are fully capable of making wise decisions on their behalf and don't need a decision made at the governor's office for their local control. And the other thing I'd like to mention is, you're saying having the governor's office decide our police commissioner would remove politics from the equation, but I'm certain any decisions that come out of a governor's office includes politics on their end. So the politics will never be removed, it's just a matter of who's deciding it. So thank you for your time.
Thank you. Okay, so I will do one last call for people to speak in favor of this resolution. Okay, seeing none. We will now take testimony in opposition. Please raise your hand, and we will go across the board.
All right, come on.
No, I didn't. I haven't called anyone yet. Okay. Yeah, would you please identify yourself? It says Julia's iPad. Name and address, please. You're on mute, I think.
Tim Hefferin, 144 Manchester Street in Nashua. Can you hear me?
Yes, could you repeat it again, please? I think they missed it.
Tim Hefferin, 144 Manchester Street.
Thank you.
Thank you for this opportunity to speak in opposition to this. It's my understanding that Deputy Chief Testaverde has provided you with an editorial I provided to The Telegraph in 2014 outlining some of the instances in which I've been personally involved in the concerns that I have as it relates to the appointment of police commissioners. Sometimes we make difficult decisions. After we've made them, we lament about wishing we had the benefit of hindsight in making that decision, hoping that it turned out right. You, the alderman, have the advantage, the fortunate ability, in this instance, to have the benefit of that hindsight. One need only look back at the history of the police department as it related to the city and local politics of the early 1900s to learn why the commission structure as it stands today came about and why we don't want to return to those ages. I know Mayor Donches through the police department when I worked there since the 1990s, and I know him to be an honorable man. Similarly, I know several members of the board presently sitting and consider you to be of high character and personal integrity, but we're all just passing through in our service to the city. There will be a time in the future, as there has been in the past... There will be a time in the future, as there has been in the past, when people will be elected to powerful positions whose character and motives will be called into question. And I cite the Aldermanic investigation that I participated in back in 1993 that put three sitting aldermen in federal prison as an example of my concerns for local control. In 2001, I was in North Carolina for our reaccreditation. During that time, the chairperson for Kalia stood among 30 to 50 other agencies from around the country and spoke publicly, acknowledging to us in words that are very similar to, "You have a unique police commission structure, one that we have rarely seen. How were you able to implement it? And more importantly, how were you able to keep it?" The aldermen have authorized the police budget over the last 30 years to spend millions of dollars in an effort to attain and maintain the accreditation standard.
30 seconds.
Thank you. Why would we ever want to return and do a 180-degree from the Kalia Board that has publicly recognized and praised specifically this form of police commission appointment? And lastly, I've heard a lot of talk about Nashua being the last place that has this format. I've also talked to police departments and officers over the past that have described in detail the frustrations with allowing local politics to come into play and how it's affected hirings, firings, promotions, investigations, and overall morale. I ask you to consider carefully the decision and the legacy that you will leave on the Nashville Police Department based on how you vote going forward. Thanks for your time.
Thank you. Okay, next we have John Fisher.
Thank you very much. My name is John Fisher. I live at 21 Indiana Drive. And I've had, I know most of you here. I either know you from my 23 years at the Nashville Police Department, from my 25 years in the Nashville Soup Kitchen Board, or through my 35-plus years of coaching youth athletics here in the city. And I could not be more opposed to this. Most of you that know me also know that after 23 years here, I've served as a police chief in Massachusetts for the last decade. I've had the opportunity to visit a lot of police departments. Importantly, Nashua is what everybody else uses as a hallmark. I taught at Roger Williams University for 10 and 1/2 years in law enforcement management, 5 and 1/2 years at Riviera. I've been on loan from BJA currently, working on a project right now. And almost everyone chooses Nashua as a go-by and for very important reasons. And I know that Chief Hefferin's talked about interference outside, and I've had the opportunity to work in a few different systems. And I can tell you what that phone call feels like when you get a phone call from a local appointed official that has power over you, for lack of a better words. It's a very unsettling feeling. And they're usually talking about hiring. They're talking about hiring, or they're talking about a decision that was made that's already in the courts. I've had the good fortune to live in Nashua for my entire adult life. And the safety of my family has been incredibly important. And I think that this decision, while well-intentioned, is short-sighted. I think the Nashville Police Department is what it is for very important reasons. And one of those is that insulation it has with the commission that's employed by the governor. And I want to, in closing, I want to thank you for your time and consideration. And I'm easy to find. If you want to give me a ring and talk about other police departments that I've been on loan to in the country and why they always hearken back to the way things are done in Nashville, I'm happy to answer your questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Sandy Cleary.
Hi. My name is Sandy Cleary. I live at 17 Adella. I want to give you a little background on myself because I think it's important in understanding what my perspective is. My first career was an aerospace engineer designing guidance systems for ballistic missiles. Upon leaving that, I started my own business, moved it up to the Lakes Region, and grew it to $135 million in annual sales and then sold it in 2017. I then looked around as to where I was going to have my next venture. And I looked, I chose Nashua. I then purchased a commercial property in Nashua as well as my own residence in 2017. I became involved in the community and started actively supporting all the local charities, or many of the local charities, including committing $100,000 to the Performing Arts Center. This is all to explain to you that I am indeed Team Nashua. I'm not a politician. I'm a businesswoman. I've been told that one of my best skills is that I have the ability to cut through the BS and to the heart of the matter and to identify the core issue and address it head-on. So I ask myself, what reasons have been offered for this change? From what I'm hearing, it's that the police department is good but could be better and that the commission needs more diversity. The reality is that you're going from one type of political appointment to another type of political appointment. You can say all you want about qualifications, merit, and community service, but ultimately, there's still appointments. And I think we have to call this what it really is. This is clearly a power grab under the cloak of diversity and feel-good verbiage about the selection process. As a woman who has been the lone woman in a room full of men many, many times in my career, I do take a certain amount of umbrage at this cloaking this as a diversity issue. I do, however, understand power grabs. And sometimes they are very necessary. However, there are times when power grabs are also so detrimental that they need to be shut down and shut down very quickly because of the collateral damage that can be done. I fear that if you let this go to the voters, that you will hurt Nashua by having two distinguished, trusted, and necessary entities defending themselves and attacking one another, only to cause the residents much insecurity and unease in the whole process. One of the reasons I relocated here is that we have a police department
30 seconds.
across the state and is head and shoulders above the rest. I have lived in and owned many businesses in various places, and Nashua is above all the best police departments that we've seen. The mayor has said repeatedly that Nashua is one of the safest cities. Security is very important to me. I came here largely because I feel safe here and I believe in the professionalism in the services offered. As a business owner, property owner, and an individual willing to get very involved in the local level of the situation if I have to, I respectfully request that the board rejects this amendment. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, looks like we have one more. Laurie Ordolano.
Hi, good evening. Laurie Ordolano, 41 Berkeley Street. I want to address a couple issues here. We've heard about the political influence on this change, and I think the woman who just spoke nailed it. There's political influence either way. There is politics involved. You can't completely remove that. But I think you do take it a step further back when you leave this appointment at the state level. You know, at the state level, the appointment of the three, nobody has touched upon that they have to come from two different parties. And right now, we have one Republican and two independents on our police commission. I haven't heard anyone here speak about how these appointments would be made by the mayor and the board. But my observation with this administration is that we tend to promote and put all Democrats on committees. And I would like to see, you know, the committee be representative of the diversity of the voter population in Nashua. And right now, your voter population is, the heaviest party is your party of independents. So I'm concerned that we wouldn't see that. I don't support solving problems that don't really exist. And I can tell you that nobody probably right now understands what retaliation is about and like than myself and what I encountered and what I have come up against in trying to address issues in the Nashua Assessing Office. It far exceeded anything I ever thought would ever happen to me. My property was raised $150,000 above what KRT had placed it at. I've, the mayor was furious with me and came after me with everything he had. Attorney Bolton told me I had offended him, the mayor. I offended Attorney Bolton. I offended Alderwoman Willshire. And the offense caused a personal vendetta to be established. I would not want the local administration, local leadership, to be appointing commissioners on the police force, for the police department because I think it would result in, you know, even greater conflicts and problems for somebody like me who opened the door and found a situation, walked into a real hornet's nest, and got caught in a way that I have not yet been able to resolve. So, you know, I'll have the opportunity to speak to this again, but I'm concerned that we'll find that it will be seats filled with Democrats. The Board of Assessors is three older men. I believe all Democrats. Two are cousins. You know, you want to talk about some conflict, you have some conflict there. And, you know, that's the way it is. And I know somebody like me who's an independent, there's no place in the city for a seat for a person like me. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so I will call again. I don't see any hands raised, but I will.
Laura Cahoon.
I have my hand raised.
Okay, just a minute, okay. So this is, we're still doing testimony in opposition.
That's what I had to present.
Okay, hang on.
Laura Cahoon.
Okay. Laura Cahoon, I'll let you go first. Since I see your name, I'm trying to find the other person. Thank you.
And I'm in opposition of it. My name is Laura Cahoon. I'm with 30 Greenwood Drive. I'm speaking out again tonight against the amendment change for the city charter relative to the manner of the appointments to the Nashville Board of Police Commission. This amendment has been on the books since September 2013 and has worked very well for the city of Nashua. There is an old saying that if it's not broken, don't fix it. Currently, there's no politics within this election. However, if the city of Nashua puts this amendment in the hands of the mayor and the president of the Board of Aldermen, it will be an utter disaster. The mayor has already shown that he is hiring only like-minded people from his inner circles for boards and committees. Just look at the boards and the committees that Nashua currently has, and a resident can clearly see this is happening. If the mayor wants the city of Nashua to be transparent, then leave the current manner of appointments to the governor. The police commissioner should never be picked because the mayor likes them or are friends with the mayor. They should not be selected because of their party affiliation or their like-minded viewpoints. It needs to be a qualified person, male or female, with no personal ties to the mayor and/or the president of the Board of Aldermen. Board members, please stand up for the Nashville resident and do not let the mayor make the city of Nashua the kingdom of Donchus. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so Eric Wilson, we finally found your name.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
My name is Eric Wilson, 60 Indian Rock Road, Nashua, New Hampshire. One of the WebEx or callers earlier talked that this Nashville Police Commission control came 100, well, 21891. And it was probably an appropriate thing at that time. Fast forward 100 years later, in 19, early 1990s, I took the seat of the Ward 4 Alderman because the former Alderman was, had been, along with two other Alderman, city Aldermen, been indicted federally. And my memory is, all three of them served time in federal prison. So as far as local control, the suggestion that local control 100-plus years ago was appropriate, I mean, the governor control over the Board of Police Commission was appropriate 100-plus years ago was appropriate then. It's appropriate 100 years later, and it's appropriate now. With respect to local control, some of the arguments coming up about local control, you have local control. All three members of the police commission are Nashville residents. There's some suggestion about diversity and the lack of diversity, since Judge Flynn sat on the police commission in the late 80s into the early 90s, and I recall Margaret Flynn. As far as diversity, we've had two female governors that I'm counting really quickly on my head, and no one brought it to Judge, to Governor Shaheen or Governor Hassan to appoint or suggest to appoint more diverse members of the board. So the issue is with the governor. As far as the budget, the budget is controlled by the Board of Aldermen and the mayor. And that's really what it comes down to, the Board of Aldermen. The police commission suggests the budget, and the Board of Aldermen control it. Going back into the 1990s, when there were some significant issues with the Board of Aldermen in controlling city contracts and budgets that wound up in the indictments, my memory is very clear that certain political pressure was attempted to be placed on the police department that the police department did not have to and would not succumb to because of their independent authority and their independent ability to investigate and foresee a criminal prosecution against, in essence, their bosses. In addition to that, I, given my position, my career position, I have been well aware.
30 seconds.
Thank you. I have been well aware of additional issues related not only to Aldermanic issues involving the police department, but as well as mayoral issues involving the police department in the years back. And the ability for the National Police Department to have a commission appointed by the governor and approved by the governor's council, executive council, is perhaps one of the most advantageous things that the city of Nashua and its residents could have. And I speak highly against this resolution. And I would hope that the Board of Aldermen see everything that's been talked to about tonight and reject it. Thank you.
Thank you. And it looks like Samantha Mahew.
Hi, I'm giving testimony in favor of the commission. Should I speak now or wait till all the ones opposing it are done?
Okay, so you're going to speak in favor of changing?
Correct.
Okay, so you'll have to wait, okay? Thank you. Okay, this is the last call for testimony in opposition of this resolution. Seeing none, we will call testimony in favor. So Samantha Mahew, you can speak.
Hi, my name is Sumati Madhur. I've been a resident of Nashua since 1991. I want to thank the current police department for a job phenomenally well-done in keeping Nashua safe. I echo several comments that were made before me that this lack of diversity and there is an element of cronyism in the current, in how the current commission is being appointed. I disagree with folks who are saying that if it's not broken, don't fix it. We are not trying to fix anything here. We are trying to improve. Local involvement or involvement of the citizens is always better than no involvement of the citizens. It's good to have people who have their eyes and ears out in the community. Also, I disagree with the comment that was made earlier that the expansion of this commission will make, will make it go from one political appointment to another political appointment. As I understand, the new proposed commission will be more extensively vetted and will be nominated by a group of people who are from different political backgrounds, hopefully, versus as nominated currently by the governor. I also take objection to the comment that was made that this is going to make it more, more political. If anything, I think it will, it will make it less political because of the expansion of the commission. Hopefully, we'll have more people from different political backgrounds as well. So I do support the expansion of this commission, and I'm in support of it being locally appointed versus appointed by the governor as it stands as of now.
Thank you. Okay, last call for testimony in favor. Okay, seeing none, testimony in opposition.
Hello, hi. I'm, hi, this is Deepa Mangalad. I wanted to give my testimony in favor. I wanted to give my testimony in favor. I seem to have trouble with my, hello?
Okay, yes, we haven't, we didn't see you. Please give your name and address. And you were going to speak in favor of this?
Yes, yes, I will. It's Deepa Mangalad, 18 Wild Rose Drive, Nashville, New Hampshire, 03063. I listened to everybody speak. I, Sumati spoke just before me. I don't need to say anything more than what she has said. I have been a resident for 30-plus years here in Nashua. And for me, the main thing is, I think Nashua, the citizens of Nashua should be the ones making a decision on this. That's almost, diversity is extremely important. I chair the Nashville, City of Nashville's Cultural Connections Committee. And for me, diversity and inclusion is extremely important. And I think very highly of the Nashville Police Department. I know several people, they do attend meetings regularly. And it has nothing to do with that. But for me, it is, we, the citizens have to, have to decide. So that's, that's important. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Anyone else in favor that wants to speak that hasn't spoken? Okay, so we will move on to testimony in opposition.
Hello?
I'm sorry?
Hello?
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 Okay, we need your, yeah, we're looking at a phone number.
Yeah, I've got an old-fashioned phone.
Okay, who is this?
Okay, this is Tracy Pappas, and I'm at 12 Swart Terrace in Nashua.
Okay, and Tracy, are you speaking in favor of this resolution or in opposition?
In opposition.
Okay, thank you.
Can I go ahead?
Yes, you may.
All right, thanks a lot. I will say, if this was an issue of local control, we'd really leave it up to the residents of Nashua and have them vote someone in. I know prior to myself being on the Board of Public Works, I think there was only one woman on there before. And since then, more women have been attracted to go ahead and run for office. So I, I think having someone appointed by the mayor and by the Board of Aldermen really is not an independent board. And again, I'm not taking a shot at the current administration. I've worked under two mayors. I just, I just think, I just think that generally, the mayor and the Board of Aldermen have a lot more political interest in what the police commission does than what the governor does. And also the fact that it's a diverse board and as far as it can't be three people from the same, from the same political party. And, you know, perhaps someone should put a bug in the ear of the governor and say, you know, if we want a woman on, then perhaps appoint a woman. It sounds like the woman that was the, the business owner that moved down here in Nashville, she sounds like a go-getter. She sounds like she'd be terrific to be on that board. But anyway, I do, I do think that if we want, if we want to give people a choice, we would go ahead and put that on the ballot. But that's not what the choice is. I think that we need an independent police commission, and that's what, that is what is on there now. And it's interesting because I spoke with a, I'm on the Board of Public Works. We're Commissioner Five, and we're kind of a different kind of board because the chair is the mayor. And as I said, I've served under two different mayors. And, you know, that kind of gives some political influence. But the fact is, we answer to the people and not the mayor. But if someone's appointed, they're going to answer directly to the mayor. And really, the governor is really not going to have that much interest in what's happening at our local police department. So I think that it should go ahead and stay the way it is. And as far as expanding the board
Thirty seconds.
as far as, as far as expanding the board goes, I know someone who used to serve on my Board of Public Works, and he later served on the county commissioner that had three. And he just said how much easier it was to get things done. And I, I think this is a dangerous power grab. And I think, I, I, I think that people should, should not vote for this. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, is there anyone else who has not spoken that wants to speak in opposition of this resolution? Okay, Ms. Ordolano, I see your name, your hand up again. Do you have anything to add that you didn't speak prior to this?
Yes, I would, I would like to know if this resolution, should it, this charter change go through. Is the board going to set, set it such that the five seats would be made up of different parties? That it wouldn't be, that it would be Democrats, Republicans, and independents? I haven't seen the language where that has been drawn out, but I think that would be very important. I'm not in favor of doing that at all. I, I do think that the boards I see appointed right now by the mayor and aldermen tend to be single-party focused. And I'm, you know, near and dear to the Board of Assessors. I go to those meetings all the time. It's three assessors, three Democrats. One of them doesn't even live in Nashua or own property in Nashua. And two are related to each other, so that concerns me. Yeah, so I, I don't think that this will be an improvement to what we have going on. And I think there are improvements to make in the police department. But I don't think going to a five-member board that's really appointed by the mayor and the elected people is really putting the power in the people's hands. If you want to do that, let us vote. Thanks.
Thank you. I'm just looking at the resolution. It says here, appointments based upon qualifications, merit, and/or history of community involvement. Does not say it has to be any particular political party. That's what the resolution states, so we need to. I think that would be up to whoever is making these appointments at that time. There'll be further discussion on that when the Personnel Committee meets in July. But it was a good question.
May I just make a correction there? Madam Chair?
Sure, Mayor.
Currently, the three-member commission, it says that no, no more than two members shall be of the same party.
Right.
This does, if you look at the end of Section A101, it includes this sentence, not more than three commissioners shall be of the same political party. So it basically uses the same system and requires party diversity. As the current three-member commission, there's a requirement of that as well. So this keeps that system, it just expands it to five people.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. Okay, so I will take, I will ask the question again. Is there anyone else who wants to speak in opposition of this legislation? Nope, okay, it looks like we're clear. Before I close the public hearing, I just want you to know that the Personnel Committee will be meeting on July 6, which is a Tuesday. And this piece of legislation will be brought up at that time, not this evening. So I would like to close the hearing on R-21-143 at
Eight eighteen.
Eight eighteen PM. And I will ask for a motion from Alderman O'Brien.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We'd like to make a motion that the June 7, 2021 special meeting of the Board of Aldermen be adjourned by roll call.
Okay, would you please call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien.
Yes.
Alderman Cle.
Yes.
Alderwoman Kelly. Alderman Dowd.
Yes.
Alderman Karen.
Yes.
Alderman Clemmons.
Yes.
Alderman Lopez.
Yes.
Alderman Tenza.
Yes.
Alderwoman Lou.
Yes.
Alderman Jettie.
Yes.
Alderman Schmidt.
Yes.
Alderman Laws.
Yes.
Alderman Cleaver.
Yes.
Alderman Harriet Gaffray.
Yes.
Alderman Wiltshire.
Yes.
You have 14 yeas and zero nays.
Thank you. And this meeting adjourned at 8:19 PM. And the Budget Committee will meet in approximately five minutes.
Yes.
Thank you, everyone.